This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Start right at 6 o'clock with the city council meeting, but we do have actually three public hearings that we're going to take care of first. The first one, so I'll call this first public hearing to order. In attendance are all council members except Steve Hackett and Eric Olson. Both of them have notified us that they're unable to attend tonight. This, and I'll just read what was printed. This is a notice hereby given that the common council of the city of Wapaka will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall 111 South Main Street, Wapaka, Wisconsin, to hear testimony on whether to change the language in Chapter 17 of the municipal code zoning ordinance to create 17.295 PUL Public Facility and Utility Lands District. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested in their attorneys or agents to be heard. A copy of the proposal, proposed changes may be obtained from the community and economic development office. So Brennan, you want to just real briefly explain exactly what we're trying to do?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up action to the annexation that we approved earlier this year for the Wapaka County, or the future Wapaka County Highway, or Highway Garage off of County Trunk Highway A. When we annexed their property in, they were replaced with an AG or Agriculture Zoning Classification, and we are required within one years to statutorily rezone that property to its appropriate zoning use. When we looked at the zoning code that we currently have, we didn't really have an appropriate type of zoning for that type of classification, so we created Section 17295 Public Facility and Utility Lands District to provide them a zoning district and classification for their project. And as we move forward with the zoning rewrite in the future, other lands like this building and parks within the community would be zoned to this type of classification as well.
Okay, at this time then, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to give testimony in favor of the change in the ordinance, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Anybody that would like to give testimony in opposition? If not, I declare this hearing closed at 6:03 PM. Next, we have a notice of a public hearing. This is placing permanent zoning classification on the Wapaka County Highway Department, County Road A. And again, I call this meeting to order, same people in attendance. And Brennan, you want to just explain what this public hearing is for?
Upon adoption of the PUL district that we just discussed this evening, the property that the county currently owns out on County Trunk Highway A would be zoned to PUL to permit them to construct their facility out on their property.
All right, understanding that, again, anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of this, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of? Any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? If not, I declare this hearing closed at 6:04 PM. Okay, one more. We have a notice of public hearing. This is for special assessments for public improvements in the city of Wapaka. It has to do with the City Hall Library Square renovation project. This is what you guys came up with for a name, no? I'm just kidding. Brennan, you want to just explain?
Why? Yeah, that's emanating from my office. But this is a requirement of the special assessment process. The city has a choice of having a public hearing before or after the project done. We've just traditionally just done it before, so that's what we stuck with. And this is just notifying the property owners that the city will proceed with a special assessment of the work. It's a replacement. We are looking to charge 50% of the cost. Right now, it's based on an estimate. When the project is all done, all the final numbers brought forth, I think that will probably happen very late this year, early next year, once everything gets reconciled to the project. So the public hearing offers the people who are pending assessments to make comments.
All right, so, understanding what this public hearing is about, if there's anybody that is in the audience that would like to give testimony in favor of being assessed, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that give testimony in favor? If not, we'll take testimony in opposition. Again, give your name and address for the record and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. No testimony in opposition, I declare this hearing closed at 6:06 PM. So we will move forward and go right into the city council meeting. I call this regular scheduled city council meeting to order, and as also always, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and just as for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachaskey.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson. Eight present, we have a quorum.
Under the consent agenda, before we vote on this, Sandy has a couple of additions that need to be added to that.
Under number five consent agenda, letter A, monthly reports, the Finance Director of Treasurers report for the month of May was distributed. And under number five consent agenda, letter D, approval of bills, City General Water and Sewer and Special Funds was uploaded to the city website. See?
Okay, so consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to see, or staff would like to see, moved to the regular agenda where you would just vote on those as individual items? Otherwise, we will vote on those with one motion and vote of all the items that are in the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by, I'm sorry, Fair, that we approve the consent agenda with those two additions. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried under regular agenda, no additions, no subtractions. We'll keep it in the order that we have on, in your packet, so we would be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Announcements, Wapaka, under the announcements, we have a Wapaka Saturday Farmer's Market Sandra, it's on page 98, 99, is she here? I'm sorry. Yeah. Sandra, do you want to make a presentation? Henry, you want to introduce her first?
Well, she might be a little shy, but we're going to make her do something here. So she came to the meeting. Sandra Alvera is our farm market manager this year, and I think she just wanted to kind of unveil some things that are going on with the market and some things that she's trying to do to move the market forward. I think the mayor, we require a name, Sandra, and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Sandra Alvera. I am the new intern as the farm market coordinator for the Wapaka Farmer's Market. I mostly manage just the Saturday market and events throughout the summer. Henry Velker still handles the weekly, everyday market. I was brought to this position through a college work experience program through the Fox Valley Tech in Appleton. I'm enrolled in a natural resource technician program there, and I have been going from company to company, you know, farm to farm kind of thing, doing different work experiences. And through my financial coordinator and through some people at UW Extension, they figured out a way to make this position viable for me to do, and I have been given a small space in City Hall to work. My main goal for this summer as the farm market coordinator is to mostly build communication and trust between the vendors and make it feel more as if it was a community instead of just separate vendors coming and trying to sell their things. We've been working a lot lately on this early part of the season on advertisement to get the word for the market out there. We've been presenting it on different radio channels. I've been talking with Josh Werner about possibly doing some sort of advertisement through the online sites there. We've printed posters and brochures, and we've handed them out throughout the cities. I also am in charge of what we call moving at the market, which is different activities. We have about, I'd say, four or five set up throughout the summer. It's just different people, different companies throughout the community that want to come in and host an event for the day. This weekend, we have our grand opening on the 23rd. It starts from 9:00 to 2:00. We have carousel gymnastics showing, they just do different activities for kids. We try to make it more of a festival atmosphere. And me being in the position is basically just to kind of consolidate everything that they've been trying to do and make that a little bit more of a streamlined process.
Great. Anybody have any questions of Sandra? Comments? Question? Your small office does have a window, though.
It does. It does, a very nice window.
All right, thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under announcements, our first meeting in July normally is the first Tuesday of the month, and it falls on the day before the Fourth of July celebration. So we wanted to discuss, I'm recommending that we cancel that July 3 meeting and just have our next meeting on the third Tuesday, which would be the 17th of July. I have talked to staff. I think soon enough, ahead of time, so that they could either get it on this agenda if it was necessary, or it can wait until the July 17th meeting. But again, it takes council approval to change or cancel a council meeting, so I guess I'm opening up for discussion or a motion that we cancel July 3.
I'd move to cancel the meeting.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mayo, second by Keeland, that we cancel our July 3, 2008 council meeting. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next is public input. We have this on the agenda every council meeting, and this is for people in the audience or even staff or council people that would like to discuss something that is not on the agenda for tonight, but they think it's important that council members hear this. So if there's anybody that would like to give some public input, again, please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input? Let's move on then, we'll go to department head reports. We'll start with our Finance Director, Treasurer, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My report was handed out, and I just have a few things to report on. We do have a simplified water rate case that was approved by the Public Services Commission and was included in the 2018 budget. This will be effective with the August 1 billing, so you won't see it until August on the bills. There was a 3% increase that we were allowed to increase the monthly service charge and the volumetric charge. We noticed it in the Wapaka Post and informed customers in their bill this past month. Next week, I will be doing a presentation on municipal budgeting at the Wisconsin Managers' Association Conference in Wisconsin Dells. I was invited to participate with the Finance Director from Waukesha Technical College and the former city administrator from Eau Claire, who was my former boss, so also using some of my budgets in the slides, so I, from when I was in Brown Deer, so I thought that was interesting. I'm also going to be starting our 2019 budget process, but it's going, right now, I'm working on updating the departmental worksheets and other information so the departments can put their numbers together. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Questions?
Did we ask for 3% Kathy?
It was included in the budget process for, when we did the water budget.
So we did ask for 3% and they grounded it?
Yeah. When you do a simplified rate case, not a full rate case, the simplified, the maximum you can get is 3%.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? All right, let's go to the library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, everyone. Summer is a very busy time for us, and we have been busy despite the construction the last couple of days, so we're really grateful that people are finding a place to park, thanking our staff for finding other places to park, so library patrons have a place out front or on Union Street. Our current numbers for our summer library program, we have 197 people participating online and 429 paper participations. And our program has changed this year because we're asking people to create their own goal rather than we create a goal for them for the summer. So I think it does open up things for families that felt like if they had to read seven hours a week, it was just too much for them. So we are seeing a little bit of an uptick in the participation. Our current exhibit is a celebration of the decades, and if you go down, you'll see all kinds of pictures and memorabilia from those, the decades, 1940s through the 2000s. And we have a jukebox, so for a dollar, you can play two songs. So maybe you'll go down and take a look. We are inviting the whole community to come down, even though there are kids' activities going on in there, and you can certainly sit down and play a game or put together a The other thing is that we are having musicals on the third Thursday of every month this summer, and this coming Thursday is La La Land. So if you haven't seen that one, you want to see it, free popcorn at 6 o'clock in our meeting rooms. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Peg. Any questions? Comments? Thank you. Brennan, economic development.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My report's on page 51 of the packet, and really just want to kind of inform the council of the project that's going on. I think it'd be a tag team between Justin and I this evening, but Justin and Roger handling more of the day-to-day stuff out on, outside the building, and I'll be handling the communication internally. But just want to let the council and the public know that we will be providing weekly updates to the community, between myself and Olivia, who is our intern within the department. We'll be creating a weekly update that'll be going out to all business owners. We have, we are creating that contact list right now. On that contact list, on those weekly updates, the common council members and the mayor will also be receiving those updates, so you are informed of the project if they have anybody that has questions or concerns. Justin will be, we'll be having a weekly construction meeting with the contractor every Thursday, and that's where the updates will be coming from. We are working with all the businesses right now to help them with directional signage and information about where some of the public parking lots are and where they can direct their customers to during the construction process. So if there is any questions that anyone does have, please certainly get them to myself or Justin. As we move forward, hopefully we have a good communication plan in place. And just also want to inform the council on a positive note is we did sell our first lot in Woodland Estates, and a house will be going up here shortly, so we are on track to start selling those lots here.
Great, thanks, Brennan. Questions? All right, let's move on to our Public Works Director, Justin Behrens.
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be seen on page 52 and 53 of the packet, and as usual, starting with the wastewater side, we drained a couple of our aeration basin tanks and took a close look at them, and we're planning some upgrades, but we'll be bringing that forward in the capital planning this next year, probably a change in our capital plan and a, might be a pretty decent amount of money being spent to improve that. We have had quite a few odor issues at the plant over the last few months. We knew we had some process issues internally at our plant over the winter time. We've corrected those, but we also know there are some issues with the Chain of Lakes Sewer District with receiving their flows, and we are working with them very closely to rectify their situation, so they know they have improvements to make, so we're hoping that the odor issues are eliminated very shortly. We, CMAR is up on the docket later tonight, and I'll be touching a little bit on that later. Moving on to the streets, the Main Street flashing is up and running. We received a number of comments already and logging those, both positive and some negative, so I believe the survey is going to be up shortly. I guess I haven't kept close tabs on that.
It is up there now.
Oh, thank you, Brennan. I apologize for that. Yep, the City Hall project is underway. We started Monday, mostly with just removals, a lot of dust, a lot of banging. We're making good progress, even though we've had quite a bit of rain. Next week, Monday, we will start installing the new water main, so that will continue on, and cross your fingers for good weather here on home. I created and sent out requests for proposals for Evan Street Design Services, so that's out there, and I'm expecting to receive those back later in July, and then, of course, bring them to you in August with a recommendation for bringing on a design firm for Evan Street. Visited the Berlin Bridge or County E-Bridge just next to Bethany today. They had their first project meeting. It seems like there's a very good contractor there. There was some delays early on, not of their fault, but they're on track now, and the detour is up. The county is maintaining that detour, and we are just kind of assisting them, and of course, with notifications, so please take the detour, plan your route appropriately. And according to the schedule, they should have the bridge back open by mid-August. On the water side, much of the same maintenance things going on. We have the well 3 and 6 rehab work coming up shortly. We're going to be scheduling that, so pretty soon we'll be working on that. We are starting a well supply study internally, so should be bringing results forward of that by the end of the year. Facilities, much of the same, just kind of the routine maintenance, you know, the big important things are going on the, on the street and sewer side right now, so that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Justin. Next up, we have, I'm sorry, do we have a question? Nope? Let's go on to our Parks and Rec Director, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just a couple of things for you, and I will start with the senior center. Still doing great things down there, and to keep those things going, she's going to have a fundraiser coming up that I just want to let you know about, so if you want to participate in that, that would be great. Next Friday, June 29th, they're going to be doing a brat fry at Piggly Wiggly up there throughout the day, so if you're free and you're hungry and you like brats, go ahead and stop up there and help them out. I know that some other organizations that we work with have done them, and they've been very successful, so I hope that she is successful as well next Friday up at Piggly Wiggly. On the recreation side, we're still full bore into our summer. Got a couple of weeks left of baseball and softball, and then we go right into soccer. We've kind of had our, this is called our tournament season as well, so we've got two down and one to go. Two weeks ago, the girls' softball had their tournament out there and brought in 24 teams to the area. Last weekend, the boys had 17 teams, that's their older kids for their tournaments that came in, and I know a lot of those teams came into the community to try to find somewhere cool during the day. A lot of them were leaving when they generally stay, so that's a good thing. And this weekend coming up, they have 40-plus teams coming in from as far away as Illinois, so they're doing good things out there. They're bringing people in the community, and things have really been going very well for us with those tournaments. So if you want to see what Swan Park looks like with 40 teams out there, stop by this weekend, and if you can find somewhere to park, you'll be able to kind of see what it's like. There'll be people everywhere, which is a good thing. So we're working on that as well, and everything else seems to be going pretty smoothly, except for tonight and last night, because our change over a playground, which is in between that 15 and 20 range, up to 23 years, so we're getting pretty close to that. He kind of gave us an idea of, you know, maybe what we've been looking at moving forward. So that's something that we'll hear more about as we move forward. You know, are we just going to keep piecing it together each year and hoping things don't break, or does it need to be replaced? Or those are decisions we'll have to make here soon, based on his evaluation. Talking about Riverside, the project, I know we've talked about how it's cutting through the river there, or cutting through the land and kind of wrecking the river. You can't tell right now because it's up about five or six feet, but it is cutting through. Had a great meeting with the DNR, some gentlemen come on a wild rose and do a lot of river restoration and river work. Met with the landowner on the other side, which is Shirley Hanneman, and there's going to be very little disruption to her land based on how we're going to try to do things, and we're going to try to get that first cut-through part fixed over the winter. It'll start and then be done in the spring, and then they're actually going to come up with a comprehensive plan in a couple of months of how we can really clean up all that, build that shore back up, make it a great area for people to be, and just make it a lot nicer than it possibly is right now, and just bring the recreation back to the park at that point. So they're going to, when they bring that forward, I will obviously bring that to you guys to take a look at and hopefully move forward on that. But we will get that fixed, and we will have some good things happening in that park in the near future. Other than that, the other thing is, boys' baseball, they still have a project that's going to be done this summer out at Swan Park, and that will hopefully start either the first weekend or the second weekend in July. They'll start trying to dig those 11-foot holes that I've talked about and just hope that we don't hit anything in 11 feet down. So we'll see how that goes, but that is about it for this week.
Thanks, Andrew. Question?
Yeah, I was, I was out at Brainerd's Bridge, and I noticed there was a lot of erosion out on the island there where the river is. Do you have any plans for that?
Not at this time. I think I've heard that before, and I have to go take a look at it, and I have not taken a look at it yet. I know in the, in the spring, we have issues with some of the ice and how it gets pushed through there and kind of eats away at that and makes it really look muddy and dirty down there, but I think that's something I will have to go take a look at, honestly. So, on the islands or more on the shores?
It's, well, it's on the island, the island closest to where the shelter is, on that side of the island.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Andrew. Next, we have our police, Ryan Ozell.
Thank you, Mayor, council. My report can be found on page 17. Last month, Tom Grant, one of our police officers, wrote a grant from Wisconsin Public Service Foundation on a safety grant. One of the things that, or the items that we put in for was some cameras that help us in locating thermal imaging that'll locate maybe people that are missing, some people that are hiding, that take off running or within buildings, or even locating evidence after a crime has occurred where they throw it and get rid of it. These cameras are being used more and more. The idea came from the fire department as to how many times that we have gone and used their equipment to assist us with a lot of our operations. So Officer Grant had gone ahead with, with writing that. That was due last week, so hopefully within the next month, we'll hear something in regards to that, and each one of those is about $700. And we, they did send us a prototype for one of them for us to use, and within a couple weeks of us having it, we actually did use it. We weren't successful in locating the person because they weren't there, but it was one of the But it was one of the tools that we used to help try to find that person. The other thing is, I don't know how many of you have been going out to Swan Park. You notice that the speed board was moved out to Brainerd Road and Bailey Street. We always receive a lot of traffic complaints in regards to speeding, and that's why you see the speed board moved around so much. But what I can tell you is that was put up on May twentieth and was taken down on June eighteenth. The average speed through there was twenty-seven point two-four miles per hour and, excuse me, I forgot my glasses. The fifty percentile was twenty-six point eight-six, and the eighty-fifth percentile speed was thirty point three-one miles per hour in the twenty-five. It's, it's great that we have the speed board. Not only does it reduce the speed, you know, the speeders that are going through there, but it really gives us a lot of data as to how many vehicles are going through and peak times that we can run radar through there. And the peak times for down at Swan Park, we're in between four and eight o'clock, obviously, which coincides with all the great rec programs that we got going on down there. So this, we haven't had any speeding complaints this year, and I attribute that a lot to that speed board. And that has been moved now with their recent construction and Berlin Street Bridge going out. So that speed board has been relocated over on Evan Street. And hopefully, it'll have the same outcome as, as what we've been seeing with it. The other thing that our department did last month is, because we are in district with Fox Valley Tech, we're able to use their facility in Appleton, the law enforcement center that they built, free of charge. We get, I believe, sixteen hours a year that we can go there and we can train for free. Sergeant Krieger, Brent Krieger, who's one of our firearms instructors, did some firearms training for the department there. We did it in two days, and it was a lot of low-light shooting. We have the range that's out here that we utilize at the Conservation Club, and we can do a lot of different things, but it's really hard to do any low-light shooting because it gets dark so quick. So we did two days of training out there, which was just some outstanding training because inside there, we can turn lights on to simulate squad car lights. There's a lot of static noise that's in there, and there's barriers that are placed in there that we can shoot from. And all that stuff, the barriers, the targets, all that's free. The only thing that we had to do is just for the overtime. So it was really good, great training that the officers received. And then last Saturday at Pick and Save, we had the Second Annual Stuff the Squad Event. And we had an officer there that was for three hours. And in that three-hour period, they were able to get seventy-four bags of food that was brought over to the food pantry. So this is the second time that we've done that with Pick and Save. And then lastly, this is something that the department's been doing for the last couple of years after Tom Godfrey, who was a police commissioner, member of ours, had set aside some donation money for us to use within the community of the police department, working with the people. And what we've been doing is, once a year, we've been going to the breadbasket and serving food. And we did this again on May twenty-ninth, and we served about a hundred and twenty-five meals. So we're going to start doing this in the spring and also in the fall. We're going to try to do two meals a year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments? Josh, next.
You might notice some new microphones around the room. I've done work on the audio system in here. So some new mics have been placed. I've played around with the placement of the speakers on the ceiling to get them closer to where people are sitting. Some equipment's been replaced in the back room, and everything's been readjusted and recalibrated. And if you had good hearing, you could have heard some buzz before coming out of these speakers, and that's entirely gone now. So I'm hoping that the audio in this room is better, and I'll be looking at our recordings tonight to see how that goes. But if you've got comments, good or bad, about what you're hearing or not hearing, let me know, because I've got some little bit of adjusting left to do. And as long as your mics point it toward you, it does its job. And it's pointed the right way. Fourth of July Parade, I just want to make a comment. We, one of the big traditions with Win TV has been coverage of that parade, and I don't know what year that started, sometime in the late eighties. And Jim King and Dan Hanson have been announcing that parade, if not thirty years, very close to it for us. And they let me know a couple of weeks ago that last year was their last year. They're ending on a good note, so I just want to thank them for their close to, if not thirty-plus years of service to the TV station. And Dan Hanson was involved very early on with sports broadcasts, and he spent some time on the Cable TV Commission. So we're going to be doing things different this year, but I just want to publicly thank them for all their years of working with us. The Wopac Online Expansion Project moves along. We've got, as of today, six POPs established up in the northern part of the county, Bear Creek, Larrabee, and Dupont. Lot of interest up there. We're slowly setting up customers, but we've got to get the infrastructure in place first, and we're working on that. A lot of people hungry for better internet up there. We've done some postcards and a little bit of other advertising up there and some good word of mouth up in that area. Yesterday, we had a pretty big issue with online and the parking lot project, the fiber coming to this building got dug up and split in half. And long story short, we got to test out our backup internet connection that we have at the PED, and it took a little bit of time to get going because there's probably a dozen different situations where that could be used. So it's impossible to have every situation set and ready to go at a instant, but we got it, and it worked well for us. Spectrum was very good. They had it fixed in four and a half hours. And the original estimate I was given was two to four days. So worked out good, but was a frustrating day for myself and our staff as we worked through that and worked through contacting back a couple dozen customers. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions, comments for Josh? All right. Next, we have our city administrator, Clerk Henry Velicker.
My report's on page fifty-eight. I failed to take the opportunity when Sandra was here to prompt her on this, but Farmer's Market and City Band, we are going to try to keep them on the square, so there should be no change there. We have learned through pre-construction conference that the contractors for this project do intend to work four ten-hour days. Now, weather could creep in there where their schedules will change. So we were just concerned initially that maybe construction would impact those events. It looks like, at this point anyways, they're going to just proceed as kind of they have before. We'll move our daily market vendor to the Union Street side for the next couple of months, and then he'll probably go back to his old location once he starts working. I wanted to mention PAC area first responders. They are getting very, very close. They have their operations plan at the state, and they really need to get that approved before they can start rolling. I have asked that their point of contact, Dave Fulmer, come in the next couple of months to kind of give you an update on the service. The city was, provided the leadership to get that really kind of off the ground. And so we're real anxious to see, see how that all comes forward. Couple meetings ago, you authorized staff to look into this concept of Parklets. We've talked about it internally a little bit and have kind of come to the conclusion that we want to study this a little more. I think initially, the idea was to have the businesses kind of forward with the idea. Felt maybe we needed to construct one. The police department had some concerns about vehicle safety. I think our goal is to design and construct one and put it out there so people can kind of kick the tires and see what it's like. I don't know that we'll be able to construct it this year, but we're going to try potentially in the flow of work. It's a lower priority item, and it would be up to the probably worst department to figure out how to work that into their schedules. And then I think probably the other important thing, and I think Brennan will probably take the lead on this with his staff, is to come up with some guidelines on, on their use, very similar to the information you saw on your packet. We talked about it before. So the concept is still kind of alive and well. I sensed from the council that you were supportive of it. It's just we're going to move with a little more purpose to try to bring one of those forward this year, potentially. Certainly can be ready for next
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Any questions, comments? All right, let's move on then to new business. We have a developer's agreement between the City of Wopaca and Premier Real Estate Management LLC. Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item starts on page one hundred of the packet. We have been working with the developer that has proposed a forty-eight unit apartment complex on the northwest corner of Webster Way and Commercial Drive out near the CAP Services East Gateway subdivision and also just south of our Eco Park that is currently under continued development. And as part of the project, the Plan Commission did review and approve the site plan last week for the project, and the developer has approached the city to receive some financial assistance for the project. This, the project is located within ten number eight. And then as part of the incentive package that we are proposing this evening, as like other development agreements recently that we have been working on, Alan Markwood's did draft this agreement, there are guaranteed, minimum guaranteed values that are, that the developer has to meet in order to receive any incentive for the project. The proposal in front of you this evening is for an incentive package not to exceed four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the project. The developers to guarantee one million dollars worth of infrastructure and improvements as of one-one twenty nineteen, with the full amount of three point six million to be guaranteed one-one of twenty-twenty for this project. Again, it's a four-unit, or forty-eight unit, four-twelve unit buildings that will be constructed. The common council did approve a couple of months ago, a design contract with Strand and Associates. As part of this overall developments, we are working with the developer and the surrounding properties out there on a joint regional detention basin. And as we continue to get into that design, we are finding more value to the construction of that based upon the requirements that the FAA and the BOA require for wet ponds and trying to get them as far away from airports as possible. So that, that is part of this incentive package as well. The developer has guaranteed a fifty thousand dollar payment towards that construction of that regional detention basin as part of their project as well. I believe the developer is here this evening, if there are any questions that the common council may have.
Brennan, I actually have one question of you or Kathy, whichever one. I guess I wasn't thinking about this when I read this before, but is there a significance between twelve thirty-one of nineteen and one-one of two thousand and twenty? As far as assessing?
Not necessarily unless the value would change because your assessed value for tax purposes is as of one-one.
Okay. So it's the same thing?
It's the same thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that it kicks in in twenty. All right. Any questions of the project? I, I think most of you, we've had the advantage in City Planning Commission of seeing this a couple of times. It's a good project. Think that it will be a nice asset to help by the airport and stuff, and especially that TIF that we have out there. So I think it's a great project for the city and also developers, you know, ready to get going on this, too. Do you want to just explain a little bit about the project, or you?
Yeah, we've been working with, my name is Chris Slater. I'm the president of Pre-Three, the development arm of our company. And I guess some of you have met my colleague, Sarah, who's been here a couple of times. I'm trying to do my best to stand in her place, but we've been working with Brennan toward, for the development here and been really excited about the, the advent, or the development of the forty-eight units that we're building. We're working towards a collaborative effort to get that done. I think we've worked through some landscaping things to make sure that it fits and is contiguous with the rest of the development in the park adjacent to where we're putting our apartments. So we're excited about it. We're closing the land tomorrow, assuming that you all approve it tonight, and then the, the construction financing next week. So we're, we're ready to put some equipment on the site and get moving dirt and hopefully have this thing moving right along. So appreciate all your efforts, and especially Brennan, as you kind of ushered and carried this thing through the, the process. So thank you.
Thank you. Still no questions?
When do you anticipate completion?
Along, next, next year. So that's, hence the, the value, or the, the fully assessed value at the end of twenty nineteen.
You are, maybe you could just explain that you, about a couple of other projects that you're doing in the area?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. Well, we're, we've recently finished seventy-two units in New London. We just received approval and closed on development Clintonville. We're working on buildings that we've built in Cronin Wetter and Mosinee. We've got about a thousand units under construction in very similar communities to Wopaca right now. Trying to think of some of the other, New Holstein, we've got some developments going. We're working on a deal in Beaver Dam and Horicon. So we've got a, a number of properties that we're, we're working on, very similar to this.
Great. All right. So staff is recommending that we enter into this development agreement. So we'd be looking for motion to approve? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fair, that we approve of entering into a developer's agreement with the Premier Real Estate Development LLC of the City of Wopaca.
It was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Sandra Colerole?
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Portaski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Brennan, it looks like the next three items are yours, so I'll let you run.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The next item starts on page one twenty of the packet, and this is the proposed ordinance for section seventeen two ninety-five, which is the PUL District, also known as the Public Facility and Utility Lands District. As described previously, this is a newly created ordinance in order to accommodate not only the future Wopaca County Highway Garage out on County Trunk Highway A, but as we continue to update the city's comprehensive plan and our zoning maps within the community, other public facilities within the community would be zoned to this type of land category in the future. So this is just the establishment of this zoning district.
All right. So this is the first reading, obviously. At our next council meeting, which is actually going to be July seventeenth, you'll have the opportunity to adopt this ordinance.
Next item, which is placed in the permanent zoning for Wopaca County Highway Garage. Currently, their property is ZONE AG. That, when we annex the property in, is required to put a temporary zoning on that with the permanent zoning required within one year. With the creation and adoption of the PUL District at the next meeting, the county would be ZONE PUL for their project.
And again, this is the first reading of this ordinance, so at the July seventeenth meeting, you would have the opportunity to vote on that also.
Next item on the agenda would be the special use permit. This item starts on page one thirty-three of the packet. Staff received an application from John and Ashwin Parent, doing business as Twenty-Two Lakes Brewing Company, for, to operate a brewery and taproom in the former Z-Wolf property located on West Fulton Street. Again, this property was previously a Z-Wolf and a couple of the restaurants. The property is ZONE B-two, which is our central business district. In order to operate a brewery and taproom within the downtown area, a special use permit is required for the property. The Plan Commission did review their application last week. At the Plan Commission recommended approval to the common council for consideration this evening. The conditions attached, we have been working through the, with the developer and the applicant for this project. Again, there was minor reconstruction that had to be done on the inside. I believe that is all completed. I believe that is all completed to date and they are just awaiting for their, uh, approved federal permits in order to start brewing beer at the facility.
All right, I know that John is here and, and also John Harris is here tonight, uh, if you have any questions of what they're planning on doing. And I don't know if you, if you guys want to just explain your project or promote it or whatever you want. You're here, so.
My name's John Harris and twenty-six eighty-three Brown Lane. Thank you, council members, for allowing us to be up here tonight.
I'm John Parent, um, from Opaque. Actually have the same address as this guy. Last, uh, last, last time I was at a city council meeting, I think it was in the third grade, won the culinary contest.
Oh, God.
You never know where life will take you.
I want to know who the mayor was at that time.
Uh, this has been about a five-year project for me. My CFO, Richard Koziac, I don't know if you've been to Koziac's Brewery in Rochelle, Wisconsin. I kind of started to take a liking to the craft beer. And so he and I spent about three years looking for locations from everywhere to, um, Silver Mist. There, there's a, there was a hundred and eight acres right behind Silver Mist and we're going to use them as an easement. Driveway access across there didn't work out to, uh, Country Greetings, a couple of other different locations. We wanted to try to figure out how to get into the Chain of Lakes or the Opaque area. And, um, we just kind of laid it aside for a while. Well, when we found out Mark Polabisky was going to be retiring in a few years, if you haven't had his beer, hopefully you'll get a chance to. So, uh, John, my son-in-law and my daughter Ashlyn, uh, showed an interest in actually running the brewery. So, uh, we had heard about, uh, the Opaque Cafe opening up about a year and a half ago and we attempted to get it. But, uh, Jamie Crystal got it from underneath us, uh, with Z-Wolf, which we proposed joining them and offering beer in the evening and they could serve food morning and afternoon and they didn't want that, so we backed off. And, uh, patience seemed to work this time. Unfortunately, it didn't work out for them and we got a call from Dan, uh, the owner of the building and he said, you guys still interested in that brewery? And so we jumped on it. Um, we are the companies, the, the brewery's name is Twenty-Two Lakes Brewing Company. We have a website already. Um, and we've got twenty-three or thirty-three likes, so we're, we're moving up.
Hundred and twenty-three.
Is it a hundred and twenty-three? Okay, well, as of last week, but currently it's a hundred and twenty-three. Um, we, uh, went with a one-barrel system. It's, it's from Spike Brewing Company. They really specialize in one brew systems and since it's a small location, we'd like to start out small. Um, my wife and I, Karen, are basically the support staff from a funding standpoint. Uh, Mark and Mary are going to be brewing and serving as well as John and Ashlyn. We're going to be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And we're, we have, uh, three fermenters and four bright tanks. We're going to be serving the beer out of the bright tanks from behind the bar. Uh, the old bar is still there from back in the day and we're even going to, uh, resurrect the, the bar stools from Opaque Cafe. Uh, we had to get a, a building permit for, uh, two bathrooms that, uh, needed to be, um, ADA compliant. And we went through that process. Also found out that I had to get a survey, I had to get a survey on a building that was built in the eighteen eighties. There's never been a survey done on that building, so we got that done. Um, we are currently, uh, we also have, uh, a couple of different, um, uh, one farm and what's the other one that you just found out? That we're going to be taking the waste to, they, they want to feed it to the animals, use it as fertilizer. So we're going to be, be able to, we're going to store it for one day on premise and they're going to come pick it up each day.
The M rights from Ambers.
The M, the M rights.
Riley Farms.
Riley Farms. Uh, we are planning on opening sometime in, uh, the end of July currently. We're waiting for federal brewery license and, uh, we've got to get our serving license, uh, keg label. We've got to have the state come on in and inspect and the, the, the location to get our state brewery license. And then we'll be ready to open.
All right. Uh, so they're here tonight because they need a special use permit, uh, to be able to do this in the city of Opaque. So that's what they're requesting and staff is recommending that we, uh, give them a special use permit for this, uh, event that they're, for their, for this, uh, Twenty-Two Lakes Brewing Company.
Move to approve?
Second.
By Mayo, second by Keeland that we approve of, uh, special use permit for Twenty-Two Lakes Brewing Company LLC. Any further, any questions, discussion? If not, uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Good luck. Uh, next we have, uh, our annual, uh, by the police chief, we have our annual inspection report, which is on page one forty-seven and one forty-eight. Chief, anything you want to add?
No, each year that we do this, we go and, um, we go into each of the establishments, make sure that the license is posted, that the bartenders have their licenses and make sure, um, with certain establishments that their beverages are being stored where they're supposed to be. But we haven't had any problems for a very long time. That's all that I have.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to approve this, uh, annual inspection report.
Move to approve?
Second.
By Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve of the annual inspection report by the chief of the local establishments. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, uh, next we have, uh, a couple, uh, we have a resolution, uh, fourteen thirteen. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our C-MAR, our Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the Wis, or our wastewater treatment plant, excuse me. So this is our twenty-seventeen overall grade for the treatment plant. Uh, we have to pass this resolution, then advertise in a newspaper to be, to follow the, uh, the steps, uh, the DNR sets forth for us. Uh, the main, uh, reason that this report is done every single year, uh, is to see if there's any corrective actions. And, um, Jeff Dyer, our past supervisor, as I noted before when he retired, uh, has done an excellent job ever since he's been here. This is another four-point-oh for Jeff and his staff and it's been that way ever since he's been here. Um, he has since moved on, so this is his swan song per se. I did not include the entire, uh, report in the council packet, but a copy will be in the clerk's office, uh, for review if anybody would like that. So, uh, as usual, our treatment plant staff is a four-point-oh. Uh, we know we don't need to do any type of corrective action at our treatment plant as far as the DNR is concerned. So, um, again, just looking for approval for DNR compliance reasons.
All right. So Justin's asking that we, uh, approve of resolution number fourteen thirty.
Second.
Okay, I got motion by Peterson, second, second by Chestnut that we approve of, uh, resolution number fourteen thirty. This is a Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the wastewater treatment plant. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh, thank you. Justin, you got another one here?
Got one more, yep. Uh, so the following pages, uh, one fifty-one through, uh, one fifty-three, uh, starting with my memo, yeah, more railroad spur work. So when I came forward to you, uh, last fall, we, uh, that was to replace or repair, excuse me, the crossing at Went Drive and Industrial Park. Now that repair was supposed to be fairly minor, just replacing the cross ties in the pavement just to get things, uh, smooth. Uh, the ties were starting to get worn out. The cross ties are the ones that you cross over as you're driving over them, not the ones that the train crosses. But as they started to work and they pulled those up, pulled up the asphalt underneath, they saw that the rail was, um, basically deteriorating, deteriorating away, most likely from salt, uh, and the spikes that hold the rail in place are not being effective. So, uh, we were, uh, cautioned and recommended by both Railworks, which is the contractor we hired, and also CN, uh, that owns the rail, uh, to do further work and replace all that rail that is out there. Now, it's been a while since that's happened. Of course, we've tried to work out the details, try to make sure that this was legit. We had a number of conversations, a couple of visits out there. And basically what it boils down to is if we, um, put it back the way it is, which is our option, uh, as soon as that track gets out of gauge or too wide, they're going to shut us down, uh, our spur. And that services, uh, two, uh, industries out there, uh, Alter Metals and Alliance Energies. Uh, and basically what's crossing over our part of the crossing is, uh, either full scrap metal or full loads, uh, tankers of propane. So, um, we're thinking that we should just do the repair and it is, uh, quite a pretty penny at this point. Uh, we're looking at forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And again, this would be charged to the TIF. Uh, so moving on with this, uh, from the last work, we do get a bit of a credit for some of the work they did not do. And moving forward, uh, we need to get this work done. Initially, we, uh, would charge it to the TIF. I have contacted Alliance Energy, they have stated some interest in a possible cost share. I need to double back with them. I have not contacted Alter Metal, uh, because those are the only two industries that utilize this crossing. If you noticed from the proposal, there is a line item for the Napuk track repair. That is not included in here, but, um, when we have repairs on that spur, which is further to the east, that services either Napuk or Torborgs, they have always, um, helped out in ponying up for the repairs. So we're going to try and do the same here and ask for a cost share on this. So moving forward, I'd like to get this approved by you now, uh, so we can get this work scheduled. Uh, these crews are very busy and again, we don't want to put this off any longer. And again, I'll, I'll be seeking a cost share from these industries. And at the very least, it might lead to an assessment, uh, to those industries, uh, to help pay for this.
Thanks, Justin. And I, I think it's important to know too, that we're talking about just this one time. I, I think, uh, we've had discussion about in the future, once this is back to, uh, fully, uh, uh, operational, that, uh, any future repairs that we do, we will assess, uh, both, uh, both users, Alliance and, and Alter Metals, uh, for any future improvements to this. Uh, like Justin said, we're going to try and work out as good a deal as we can this time. But in the future, especially with the TIF starting to close, we don't want to have any added expenses, uh, or taxes. But for now, alls we're asking you to do today is just approve, uh, the actual work of this and that the money will come out of TIF three. Okay, discussion, motion?
I do have a question. Are there any potential other customers who would use the spur?
Not at this point. It's landlocked. There's, I guess there is a potential, the place just north of Alliance is Performance Industrial. They could use it. I don't think they have an interest in it. But really, yeah, this is about, that's all that's going to be serviced are, are these two industries right now.
Justin, when you say cost, try to work out a cost share now with them now, um, that be just splitting this cost between the two? Are we still going to take part of it this time? If you do work out a system?
Well, we, we'll see what they're willing to do, what they're willing to cooperate with, but certainly, I mean, it's, it's our rail. Uh, you know, and if businesses do well in, in just Industrial Park, the community does well. I mean, but should the entire community pay for something that only two businesses are benefiting from? Uh, so I guess that's kind of the direction we're going is to look to see if they're open to, uh, sharing on the costs now because they're the only two that utilize this crossing.
Silent moment here. Looking for a motion.
I will move to approve this, uh, at a cost not to exceed forty-three thousand five hundred.
I will second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut that we approve of entering into, uh, or hiring Railworks Track of Green Bay, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed forty-three-five to repair, uh, the crossing at Went Drive. Any discussion?
Does this go out to bids or how did, how did it settle on?
With the last work in October, we went, we saw, uh, several proposals. Uh, we, the lowest was Railworks and they are coming out of, I believe, Wisconsin Rapids is their home base. Uh, Green Bay, excuse me. Uh, the next closest one is in Menominee Falls and then the three others that are on the CN's approval list are out of state. So the last time we looked for proposals, we got it from the two that were in the state and Railworks was the lowest by about forty percent.
Okay. Any vote? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh, thank you, Justin. Uh, we have a mayor's appointment. I'll turn that over to, uh, council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor would like to appoint Erica Weingarten to the library board. Having heard the mayor's appointment, I would need a motion for approval.
Move to approve? Second.
Move by Chestnut, uh, seconded by Peterson to approve the mayor's appointment of Eric on Weingarten to the library board. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
All right.
Erica is here this evening. Erica's here for her appointment.
Nice, all right. Want to just introduce yourself? We know who you are now, but, uh, I'll tell you, um, in, in this day of, of trying to find people to sit on boards and commissions, it's, it's, uh, difficult at best, I guess, to say this. And Erica has written a letter to us and has shown huge enthusiasm for being on the library board. So I, I welcome her and, and look forward to working with her.
Thank you very much. I'm Erica, you would, might know me by my maiden name, Hawkins, Erica Hawkins Weingarten. I grew up here, graduated from high school in nineteen seventy, moved away, did lots of things out in the world. Now that I am retired, I wanted to come home and find a way to serve my community and this opportunity came up. And so I am pleased and delighted to be part of this. I'll thank you.
Jackie's sister? Lucky's.
Lucky's daughter.
Lucky's daughter, okay. Sorry.
He used to do her taxes, right?
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
For coming tonight. All right, uh, we have, um, next, uh, disallowance, uh, of Deborah Wilkining personal injury claim. You can find that on page one fifty-four. Kathy, anything that you want to add to this that's?
No, it's just a matter of record for us to, um, disallow the claim, uh, for personal injury to, uh, start the clock in the limitation to six months, uh, for her to be able to bring it to court. So that's all we're looking for right now. Unless anybody has any more, need more information than what I provided in the memo.
Okay, so, uh, insurance and, and Kathy, of course, are recommending that we disallow this, uh, claim. So we'd be looking for a motion to disallow. Motion by Pritchardski.
Second.
Second by Peterson that we move to counsel disallow the personal injury claim as submitted by Deborah Wilkining pursuant to Wisconsin. Second by Peterson, that we move to counsel disallow the personal injury claim as submitted by Deborah Wilkening pursuant to Wisconsin statute 893.80, parent one, parent G, in the amount of So we're disallowing that. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, we have license report number 1411. This is a scrap dealer's license, one that's a carryover. We got most of those at the last meeting, so we'd need a motion to approve this license report.
Move to approve 1411.
Motion by Keeland, second by, help me out, Fair?
Sure.
Is it? Okay.
Second.
All right, that we approve license report number 1411, this is scrap dealer license. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. License report number 1412, these are operators or bartenders' license within the city of Wapaka. We'd be looking for approval, obviously pending background checks and making sure that they don't owe any money to the city. Looking for a motion to approve. Some of?
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Pritchardski, that we approve license report 1412, operator's license. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. Let's see. All right, remember then to cross off that you, we are not having a July 3rd. I'm sure Sandy will send out a email to all of us to remind us. So our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be July 17th. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is July 17th, 2018, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:13 PM. Thank you, everybody, for attending, watching, drive safe, don't walk through the parking lot.
Go Brewers.